Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Skokie Village Board for Monday, June the 17th, 2019. This evening we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Village Clerk, Promote Shaw.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting will come to order and the clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Roberts?
Here.
Trustee Sutker?
Here.
Trustee Eldridge?
Here.
Trustee Brumberg?
Here.
Trustee Klein?
Here.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Here.
Mayor Vandusen?
Here. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is appointment. This evening we have a promotion from police officer to sergeant and Nicole Pottis will do the honors. Nicole?
Good evening, Mayor. I forgot to say hi. Good evening, Mayor Vandusen, trustees, interim fire chief, Hope Litch, Police Chief Scarpelli, and to all of you who are here on this very special evening, I would especially like to acknowledge the family and friends of tonight's appointee. Tonight we're here for the swearing-in of our newest police sergeant. We must never forget that the men and women who serve as first responders deserve our admiration. They are often the first on scene of a tragedy and provide security and comfort to those who are suffering. We invest our first responders with authority to promote and keep the peace. They deserve our support and gratitude as they do their jobs. It is now my great honor to have this opportunity to begin the swearing-in ceremonies. We'll have you introduce your family afterwards, okay? All right. So if you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me, I, Sergio Marino?
I, Sergio Marino.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America?
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States of America.
The State of Illinois?
State of Illinois.
The ordinances of the Village of Skokie?
The ordinances of the Village of Skokie.
And the rules and regulations?
And the rules and regulations.
Of the Police Department and the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commission.
Of the Police Department and the Skokie Board of Fire and Police Commission.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a police sergeant to the best of my ability.
Of a police sergeant to the best of my abilities.
Okay. So Sergeant Marino, could you please introduce your family?
My beautiful wife, Paula, and my two girls, Haley and Carly, and I got my mother-in-law, father-in-law, Debbie and Marty, and then my nephew, Matthew, and then my parents, Pedro and Lena, and then my sister, Joanna.
Excellent. Thank you.
Congratulations, Sergio. You exemplify what is all the greatest in our department. There's a reason why the Skokie Police Department is recognized as one of the best in the United States. It has all, it is. A scene stealer. She's, what is her name?
Carly.
Carly. Beautiful.
Thank you.
I think that says it all. I'm not even going to try and compete with that. Carly, congratulations. Before we take a short break so we can all personally congratulate our new sergeant, I would like a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda. Trustee Klein, seconded by Gray Keeler. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody would like to have removed? If not, call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
I.
Trustee Sutker?
I.
Trustee Eldridge?
I.
Trustee Brumberg?
I.
Trustee Klein?
I.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
I.
Mayor Vandusen?
I. The motion passes. Let's take a short break so everybody can congratulate our new sergeant and then we'll resume with the village manager's report. The meeting will come to order and we have the report of our village manager, John Lockerby.
Thank you, Mayor Vandusen and Village Board. Good evening, everyone. Item A is regarding the adoption of the fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021 budget. The memorandum included in the agenda packet and posted on the village's website is a summary of actions and decisions made by the mayor and board of trustees during their review of the two-year fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021 budget. The innovative two-year approach provides a long-term prudent financial plan to the difficult financial challenges the village is facing, largely from public safety pension liability increases and declining sales tax revenues. The public safety pension, including both fire and police, unfunded liability has increased for the village to over $130 million. On the screen you can see FY 2019 to the far left, in the middle is the first year of the proposed budget, and then on the right is the second year of the proposed budget. So for context, on the first line of numbers, back in FY 2017, the village was contributing $7 million to the public safety pension. As we look at the first year of the budget that's being proposed this evening, FY 20, you can see it's a $9.9 million budget, and the following year is $10.5 million. And so for the first year of the two-year budget, we're experiencing a $1,025,156 in increase. Following year is a $590,000 increase, and this is after a $515,000 increase last year. The total increase over five years is $3.5 million. Now, at the same time, the village's largest revenue source, sales taxes, have been declining. On the chart shows three years of history and then two of the proposed budget years. So going back three years, we received $29.4 million in sales tax annually, and as we look out two years from today, the farthest number to the right, it's $27.2 million. This is the Amazon effect, more and more items being purchased over the Internet. The decline is 7.7% from three years ago to the end of the two-year proposed budget. That's the reduction of $2.3 million annually. The two-year budget is a balanced approach, including significant savings seen primarily through reducing the number of personnel and new revenue. The personnel savings are $1.7 million annually. The village has frozen 27 positions. In addition, the village has reduced non-personnel-related expenses. All of these actions are the result of the three public hearings conducted by the board during April of this year. In summary, the village's operating budget, commonly known as the general fund, is decreasing to $60,350,978 and $61,976,523 for fiscal year 2021. All funds including water, pension, economic development, motor fuel, and local fuel tax, self-insurance, general obligation, bonded debt, tax increment financing, federal aid, performing arts center, convention and visitors bureau, special service areas, wireless alarms, and capital improvement program, total $124,422,364 and $126,498,697 for fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021, respectively. The budget requires increased funding, including a 3% water rate increase and the establishment of a 2% amusement tax, a 5% self-storage user fee, a 2% packaged liquor tax, and an emergency incident cost recovery fee for fire incident responses. In one year from today, I will provide a progress report with any required changes and a status. I respectfully request mayor and board approval of the fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021 budget and authorize the Office of Corporation Counsel to draft the necessary ordinances.
A motion on the manager's request is in order. Trustee Roberts, seconded by trustee O'Wright. Are there any comments or questions on the budget memorandum? And then, would it be in next month, second meeting?
Correct.
Second meeting, we would have the appropriation ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. Trustee Roberts?
Well, I'm very proud of this budget. I think it was a result of very hard work by John and the staff. Every budget has both a revenue side and an expense side, and I, what I appreciate is that the staff has paid attention to both. We have fewer positions in the, on the village staff, which is always a sacrifice. Our citizens expect the same amount of service and high-quality service from our staff, and there'd be less people there to do it, but we realize that's necessary, given our financial situation. On the other side of the coin, we're going to continue to deliver those good services. We're going to continue to, a lot of the expensive tasks that I think the citizens have come to expect, such as resurfacing our streets to the tune of $600,000 or $700,000 per mile, things are expensive. On our garbage truck is $275,000, a new fire engine is $825,000. How do we, as a government, pay for these things? So I think that we've done, we've tried to address both sides of the equation of the budget, and I'm proud of this budget. In addition, John, I just wanted you to comment on, in addition to the pressure that we had on sales tax, we've not always had the best luck with the state of Illinois in taking some of our revenue to the tune of this, and it's going to continue in the new state budget, that it'll continue to take part of the revenue that we traditionally have held as a village or enjoyed as a village, and our motor fuel tax is going down. People, cars are more efficient and people aren't driving as much. So the landscape is changing, and we have to face with how do we pay for our government that we want for the quality of our life and to, for our citizens to enjoy life here in Skokie and for our businesses to want to come here. So I think it's been a good, it's a hard balancing act, but I appreciate the work of the staff. But John, I would like you to just comment briefly on, if you could, on the revenue that we're missing from the state of Illinois and for, and how that fit into the equation, if you could, please.
I'd be happy to. And in the audience too this evening is Julian Prendy, our finance director, and so Julian, if I leave anything out, please come to the podium and contribute. So the state revenue reductions continue, unfortunately. Part of what we do is we participate with the Northwest Municipal Conference, which is a COG, a conference of government of about 50 municipalities, and a lot of what that group does is try to protect the revenue that municipalities receive down in Springfield, and it's an ongoing battle and a battle that we lose on occasion. And so, for example, there's a 5% reduction in the local government distributive fund, commonly referred to as the LGDF, the pool fund for income taxes. And so basically, income taxes are collected from the state, there's a formula where a percentage of that is allocated to municipalities across the country, and that-
Across the state.
Excuse me, across the state. Wouldn't that be nice? If the whole country would contribute to us. But no, excuse me, so it's money that's allocated across the state to municipalities, but we have lost $300,000 from that. In addition, it, a few years ago, about three years ago, the state started to charge us a collection fee of sales taxes, and so the village has a sales tax that is specific to Skokie. Now, the state of Illinois collects the sales tax for us and the telecommunications tax, but they actually take a 1.7, excuse me, 1.5% from that tax as a collector's fee. And so that's money that we used to receive that we no longer receive. And then there's also been reductions to the personal property replacement tax, or the PPRT, and that annual impact is estimated at $250,000. And so there's a number of revenue sources that the state serves as the collector, and they continue to sometimes take some of our funds. Those are three examples of that.
And I think taking a two-year budget approach this year is advisable because it gives us an opportunity over a longer period of time to get a handle on all of these funds. And hopefully we'll be able to cut off the cuts from the state, and we will get, be able to get a handle on the pension problems. Well, as you know, you're a delegate to the conference, we have 650 pension funds in the state of Illinois to service our first responders. We have some legislation into try and consolidate all 650 into one pension fund, like the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. The governor has assembled a task force. I'm told that next month they'll release their report. Hopefully, we're going to get some good news and the governor will be supporting a consolidation, which could save, across the state, millions of dollars for all of us, so hopefully we'll have some progress. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
I vote aye.
Trustee Sutker?
I.
Trustee Eldridge?
I.
Trustee Brumberg?
I.
Trustee Klein?
I.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
I.
Mayor Vandusen?
I. The motion passes.
Item B is regarding a proposed Oakton Street and Niles Avenue TIF district for setting the joint review board meeting and public hearing dates. This evening is the next step in considering a TIF in our downtown. TIF is short for tax increment financing, specifically in the vicinity of these two streets that I mentioned, Niles Avenue and Oakton Street. The requested action tonight is a preliminary step of approving a resolution to convene a meeting of the joint review board. This is a group representing the various taxing districts and a community member at large. That date is July 11, and to conduct a public hearing on August 19 as part of the village board meeting. As way of background, I would like to provide context of this request. Forgive me, I have a couple of slides again that look like a type of drape that doesn't work. It's worse than the 1980s. Can you previous? Thank you. So the proposed TIF is about six, six and a half acres. It's the purple and the green, on Oakton Street, next to Niles Avenue. All of this is adjacent to or part of the Illinois Science and Technology Park. There's two parcels that I'm going to focus in on tonight. This is just meant for context, as we're going to have a public hearing later this summer, if the resolution is approved this evening. This is the former Sanford Brown Building at 4930 Oakton Street. It's been vacant since 2014. We have a developer that is proposing to build this Homewood Suites by Hilton. This hotel, as proposed, would feature 140-room suites. It's a $43 million investment, and it's been part of two different feasibility studies that demonstrate a demand for this product. We can go back to the picture. And so also included in this project is a rooftop bar. Towards the east part of the building, you can see some exposure to the sky. That's intended to be a rooftop bar and restaurant. On the second floor, you can see on the corner that is facing us, there's conference room space of about 10,000 square feet. On the very first floor of the building is approximately 10,000 square feet of ground floor and restaurant, excuse me, ground floor, retail and restaurant space. There's also a pool, a fitness center, business center, and a terrace area on the second floor. That's an open area as you look from the east to the west, coming this way on the second floor. There's significant, this is a significant addition for the downtown. It actually has been contemplated for years that having a hotel in the vicinity of the science park would be very helpful, as many of the tenants of the tech park are international and they have a number of travelers that come for various business purposes. Also, just to the north of this proposed hotel, you'll notice the parking garage, which is a necessary component for the hotel. This is just a summary of the points I made. It's a $43 million investment that wouldn't happen without the TIF district. This is Building J. We affectionately refer to it as Building J. It's part of the tech park, the Illinois Science and Technology Park. As we look at it from this perspective, this is Oakton Terrace, kind of serves as an alley where the X's to my right, right of the screen is where the hotel, the proposed hotel would be located, and then to the left of that, where the utility poles are, would be Oakton Terrace. And so what is being contemplated for that location is this building. It's 143,000 square feet, available for office, research and development, and lab space, and there's also a pedestrian connection between the building, Building J, the new building, which is demolished, I should say, is not a new building. It's been vacant since the year 2000, and then connecting to another building of the Science and Technology Park. So this building is estimated to have a $63 million investment. The exterior construction, we're pleased to report, is currently underway. American Landmark has started that process, and they actually anticipate the completion in September of this year. We're looking for a tenant or multiple tenants to locate in that facility, could have 400, 450 employees there. We have been in serious conversations with one firm that's contemplating buying this building, but a TIF district is necessary for that to happen.
And the park is leased up?
And excellent point, Mayor. So currently, the park is fully leased up, 100% occupied, over 22 tenants, over 1,600 employees, and so there's a need for this new space. One, just real briefly, other components of the TIF district to be contemplated, parking structure and so forth, but again, tonight, I didn't want to get into all these details. I just wanted to give a little bit of context, and I think the final point to highlight, there's too many numbers on the slide, so I'm going to call your attention to two in the blue. Basically, what is there today, as it is today, there's $315,000 in revenue from property taxes. If a TIF district is created, that $315,000 would remain. All of the taxing districts would continue to receive that money. The private investment would occur, the construction would happen. The hotel is much, much, much further along in concept than Building J, but there is potential for both of those development to happen. If both of them happened, it's a value of 1.9 million in annual property taxes compared to the $315,000 that's happening today. So there's a lot of information here tonight. Again, it's just the resolution on whether or not to set the two meeting dates. I respectfully request approval of the resolution.
A motion to accept the manager's schedule for the joint review board and the public hearing would be in order. Trustee Brumberg, seconded by trustee Gray Keeler. I believe, Steve, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah.
Sure, please. Steve Dumbo, president of School District 69, welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor Vandusen and members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Steve Dumbo, and I'm the president of the Board of Education of Skokie Morton Grove School District 69. I want to share with you the board's concerns about the formation of a new TIF district within the boundaries of our district. District 69 is one of nine elementary school districts serving- District 69 is one of nine elementary school districts serving students living in the village. Our territory includes the entire downtown Skokie area. Since 1990, the village has had three TIF districts within our territory, the Downtown TIF, the Science and Technology TIF, and the West Dempster TIF. The village is now considering the fourth TIF district that we just heard about, and the proposed new TIF district would cover parcels that have previously been in the Downtown TIF and are currently within the Science and Technology TIF. The impetus for the new TIF is a proposed hotel and parking garage development, and we are not opposed to the idea of a hotel downtown. And we do agree with the village manager and economic development director that a hotel would be a positive amenity for the entire village. What we don't agree with is that over $40 million in incentives for this development be raised from a TIF district impacting primarily the District 69 community. A development that will have a village-wide impact should be funded by the village as a whole. Skokie is a homeroom village with wide latitude on how it can raise and spend revenue. District 69 is almost entirely dependent on local property taxes. The village can generate revenue from hotel tax, sales taxes, property taxes fees, and many other sources. We encourage the village to look to these other sources rather than defaulting to a TIF district yet again. A TIF will have a disproportionate impact on a small portion of the village for a development that will benefit the entire village. We believe that any economic incentives for this hotel development should be drawn from the village as a whole. It has been stated to us on several occasions that the village has frozen property tax, the property tax levy at 15.4 million since 1990, more for around 29 years. And one of the reasons that the village is able to freeze its property tax levy is that you're raising revenue through multiple TIF districts using District 69's tax levy. We urge you to fund this development with village-wide sources. Perhaps, now is the time to consider increasing the village's property tax levy to fund this hotel development that, as previously stated, will benefit the entire village. Putting that burden principally on the taxpayers of just District 69 is unfair and does not recognize the adverse impact that TIFs can have on our schools. The Board of Education opposes another TIF district within its boundaries. We don't feel that you've made the case that this is the only viable option for incentivizing the hotel developer to locate in Skokie. And we urge you to be creative, to look for the, to the village's other resources to come up with another solution to create the incentives necessary for this development. Like I said, while we are not opposed to the idea of it, we just need to make sure that we are not putting undue burden on the families within District 69. Thank you for your time this evening and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? All we're doing tonight is setting up the schedule for the Joint Review Board as well as for the public hearing. Public hearing is August the 19th. Yes? If you would give us your name and address, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Ted Smucker. I'm at 8500 Lawndale in Skokie. My understanding of TIFs is that they were supposed to help blighted areas redevelop. I'm not sure that that part of, the buildings were vacant, but I'm not sure that we would consider that a blighted area. The problem to me with TIFs, and it's, and I might be giving Skokie short shrift here because it's everyone, but everyone is bribing businesses that could be profitable on their own by keeping them, giving them tax dollars to do a private enterprise that's a for-profit situation. So, I think this happens nationally. States do this, cities do this, sort of bribe away, you know, the development, the Foxconn development in Wisconsin. The state gave away millions and millions of dollars and now there's questions about how that's going to be used. You know, I like the idea, obviously, of a hotel. I think a hotel and the other development, creating jobs is wonderful. I don't know why we all give in to having to bribe private industries to come to our town.
Well, philosophically, I think you make a perfectly legitimate point. In the case of the tech park, it was a question of 24 acres formerly GD Searle Pharmacy, it was closing. They came over and that's what they told me, we're closing. They were closing 10 across the country. We weren't the only one. There was one in Kalamazoo that closed down, same type of park. We had the opportunity to have Forest City Enterprises come in and redevelop the whole area. I don't know how many of you remember GD Searle. It was a monolith, one entry into the entire park. They were great neighbors. We have no complaints about GD Searle or their successors. But we were faced with a question, what do we want? And when Pharmacy asked me, I said, "I want three things: jobs, jobs, and green space. Get rid of the monolith, let's make it into a, give it a neighborhood park feel." Forest City agreed to do that and they agreed to put in $150 million into the park. Demolition costs, modernizing the current lab space, and hopefully, we were all hopeful that eventually we would get J Building done, that was the old Vivarion, and that eventually a hotel would come in. We were hoping that we would have an international flavor to the park. We've accomplished most of that goal. We have more jobs there than when GD Searle and Pharmacy were there. That's the positive. We're 100% leased up. That's the positive. We need new space. American Landmark is willing to do it. John and I last week met with the CFO of a single user that is very interested. First thing he said was, "What's the TIF assistance?" They want to be able to figure that in because they have down what it costs them every year to carry on their company. And they disclosed to us, very frankly, what their costs were. So, the question is, do we, do we want the single user? I think we do. It would be 400 jobs and it would bring in and of itself economic development. So, it's the hotel and the development of J Building, both of them. We will know by the end of the summer about the single user. I think we have a pretty good chance. We have been in discussions with them for approximately six months. They have to make a decision themselves as to what their future is. And they're talking about investing substantial money into the park. So, when, the word bribe, I think, is a loaded word with all due respect. I prefer the word incentive. What we need in, right now, quite frankly, and Steve, I sympathize with the point you made, we need in the state, school funding reform. We've come close twice, once under the Edgar administration, once under the Bogoevich administration. I worked on both. The one under the Bogoevich administration, I worked on a great deal. I was going down to Springfield at least once a week, working on the legislation, hoping we could get it done. We came close. Literally, at the last minute, we lost. The Senate President, he didn't have the votes. It's complicated. All kinds, support vanished after the governor had swept every single fund in the state budget. In order to balance the budget and school administrators, understandably, got very nervous and were wondering, will the governor sweep our money if we do this? School aid reform. So, what we rely on therefore are TIFs and we've been very successful with them. Floral Avenue, Walk Down the Street, it's beautiful. Anywhere from 550 to $900,000 homes. What we had there before was an abandoned cleaners. The entire property was infected with PERC, required major environmental cleanup. We had an abandoned golf store, some of you, I don't know, I'm not a golfer, some of you might remember it, just closed and it sat there vacant for close to eight years. We had an abandoned vacant bowling, bowling emporium, sat there vacant, close to eight years. The market told us, if you want to develop Floral Avenue, you've got to give TIF assistance. When you invest in these areas, you're not talking about small amounts of money. These are big projects. Village Crossing was a tax increment financing. I know, I negotiated the deal. Two-thirds Skokie, one-third Niles. I remember when I sat down with the then mayor of Niles, and I said, "What do you think of a joint TIF?" And he said, "On one condition, we don't, we don't take all the parking." It had been the old AT&amp;T lab that was closing down. So, we negotiated and you can see, it's one of, it's a shopping center that is still doing reasonably well. Church and East Prairie was a tax increment financing district. That entire area was saved. It was blighted. We had the old White House Liquor Store that was right on the border with Evanston's. You old timers will remember the White House. It was notorious. That entire area has been redeveloped. 8,000 North, how long has Desiree sat? Close to 10 years. The market told us, we want to develop it. We brought in seven different developers, the staff, the board, we all interviewed all seven. We now have what is going to be a beautiful project. First thing, what is the public incentive? Ignite on Skokie Boulevard took 18,000 square feet of an abandoned vacant warehouse. The Levitas Project on Skokie Boulevard, which will be multifamily, likewise, an old abandoned place. In land use, what you always have to ask yourself is, is what is there now? What you want or what do you want afterwards? As John pointed out in his one slide, there's a certain amount of property tax that comes in. And we can continue that, but it's only going to decline because with property taxes, as buildings remain vacant longer and longer, they go to the assessor and they get further and further reductions in their property taxes. So, how do you go from a building that's been vacant for a considerable period of time, in this case, to, to redevelopment, which will appreciate the value of the entire area? We will do our best to figure out if there's any alternative. I will tell you, and this is just myself personally, I'm not speaking for anybody else on the board, an increase in the property tax levy of the village is off the board. We're not going to do that. If there is any one single consistent complaint I get, and I know when the property tax bills go out, I don't have to go home and get mine in the mail. I know because the phones start ringing. It's the property tax. We originally froze the property tax. I was on the village board at the time. Mayor Gurrell was the mayor. We did it for a couple of different reasons. One, we thought it would incentivize businesses to come to the village. Secondly, we thought it would give our school districts, our park district, and our library the major beneficiaries of the property tax, that slight little increment, so it wouldn't become a burden. Property taxes are a burden across the state, everywhere. It's not just Skokie, it's everywhere. There's a reason why the Illinois General Assembly was going to take up legislation to freeze the property tax in the state. They just couldn't quite get over the hump. But don't be surprised if they don't come back in the veto session or in the next session and consider legislation to freeze the property tax. Steve, you probably get the phone calls the same as I do. So, July 11, the Joint Review Board, August 19, the public hearing. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? Sure. Your name and address, please. Thank you.
My name is Jill and I live on Keating. I'm worried about the vouchers and why you give so many vouchers out. There's been crime by my house and it's, it's not good. It just isn't. You let people in?
Well, if you don't mind, right now, we're taking up the schedule for the tax, consideration of tax income finance. Your comments would be appropriate under citizen comments later in the agenda.
When?
Later in the agenda, after we take up the Corporation Council's report.
All right. Okay.
Sure. You'll have plenty of time. Anybody? I'm sorry.
If I recall in my reading about this TIF project, there was some talk about when the project becomes completed, removing some of the properties that have already come to fruition, have been completed to ease the burden of some of the tax, tax burden on the residents. Is that still happening?
Yes. And so, the village has a very strong record in the past with TIFs closing early. The state statute usually, it calls for 23 years and a potential 12-year extension. In the village of Skokie, we have had five tax, TIF districts, and the majority of those have closed much sooner than 23 years, 15 years, 13 years. And so, in addition to that, the village has partnered with District 69, for example, in the past and helped provide some funding for various expenses. And with what we're talking about, part of what the public hearing will be in August, is that the properties, the homes on Floral Avenue, the two blocks north, two blocks north of Village Hall, are currently in a TIF and they would be taken out of the TIF and then put back on the tax rolls. And so, for District 69, for example, those homes would generate about $850,000 over the remainder of the TIF, or about $85,000 annually. And so, part of what-
Does that include the multifamily?
That is just the eight single-family homes. And so, the intent is for us to redevelop land and then put it back on the tax rolls as soon as possible. So, that component is part of what is still being contemplated and planned for if the TIF is implemented.
So, you would go through all the properties, be sensitive to District 69, and remove the ones that no longer need to be on there? That's what you're saying, right?
Right. That the existing TIF would be shrunk. The property that has redeveloped already could be, would be placed back on the tax rolls.
Going along with Alonka's question, can you also tell us how you've released properties in the past that have gone back to District 69 and what kind of dollars that has generated?
Sure. Leslie Murphy is in the audience. She's our Economic Development Specialist and she may have the precise numbers with her, or Lynn Becker, our Economic Development Manager. But so, back in- But so back in, there's two TIF districts in the downtown. Those have been reduced in size. And so, so for example, when 8,000 North was being approved, that developer said, you know, we'd like to have a new TIF. We need 23 years in order to make 8,000 North happen. And what we said was, we cannot make that a new TIF. You have to figure out a way to make this project viable within the existing TIF. And to their credit, they did. And it's an expensive project because really what happens in these downtown development projects is that the parking makes it not work financially. Each parking stall costs somewhere around $25,000 to construct. And that $25,000, when you're building 250 spaces, adds up very quickly. And so they make them, that makes them not financially feasible without some type of public partnership. And so for the 8,000 North, we said you need to make it work in the current TIF, and they did. But what we did do was we took out properties that had already developed and put them back on the tax rolls. Can I put you on the spot, Leslie?
No. We-
Luckily, we have everything in our packet over here for these kinds of questions. So some of you might recall that when we established the, the village's first downtown TIF district, we did it in 1990. And then in 2005, there was a determination made by the local merchants, and I believe the school districts, to allow that original TIF district to go the full 23 years and not to, to be terminated after a 15-year time period. At that time, though, the village determined that they would amend the TIF district and remove over 50% of the existing EAV, which at the time was 33.5 million, which equated to a direct $16.7 million that were then released to all of the taxing districts to go from that point forward, 2005, and to start accessing that for their own levies. So that was a significant amendment that was made at that time. And then when that TIF district ended in 2014, there was an additional $15 million that was then released over the course of the entire 23-year period. So, so that was the first time that an amount was released, and a, and a very large amount that was disconnected from that TIF district. During that time, there was also provisions made to District 69 individually for a 10-year period where monies were allowed for existing school improvements that were within the TIF district. So that's our first experience beyond the early terminations of the Village Crossing TIF district, as well as the Church East Prairie. And I can speak on behalf of my experience, where I have probably established over 100 TIF districts before I came to the village of Skokie. That was unheard of, that any other community would do that. So that's one example of where the village was very prudent about their management, the care and feeding of their TIF district. They let it go and made some changes with eight years left in the TIF district.
Thank you.
Let me just say.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Elrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Wendus.
Aye. The motion passes.
Item C and D of my agenda was completed, or approved, excuse me, under the consent agenda this evening, and that completes my report.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is report of our Corporation Council, Michael Lord.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. Good evening, everyone. Items A, B, C, D, and E were on the consent agenda at the beginning of tonight's meeting, and they were adopted at that time. Item F is a request for executive session in accordance with paragraph 2C 11 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act pertaining specifically to review and discussion of pending litigation. Mayor, I'd ask for board action on this request.
A motion on an executive session at the request of the Corporation Council is in order. Trustee Suckers, seconded by trustee Roberts. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Elrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Wendus.
Aye. The motion passes.
Thank you. That would conclude my report.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board? Yes, ma'am.
I'm worried about the neighborhood where I live. You're letting in, there's so many vouchers, I can't understand. I just hope you're not going to make any more affordable housing. There's been two incidents by my house.
What is your address?
On Keating. I live on 900 on Keating and on Davis. There were 15 squad cars on Saturday night with police running through the alley by my house. And yes, I am worried about that, and this is because people come with the vouchers from the south side with their crime, and I have it by my house. And I'm worried about it. This is not good. I don't want to be afraid to go out at night for thinking the people that moved in at that townhouse, who had a gun and was arrested, is going to maybe start shooting.
Well, vouchers are down.
Oh, I don't know.
Yes, they are.
By my area.
No, I'm telling you, vouchers are down.
I hope so.
Let, let, please let me, let me answer. We do not control the vouchers. That's the Cook County Housing Authority, not the village of Skokie.
I don't know.
No, well, I'm telling you.
All right.
This is fact. You can dispute fact, but in this case, it's very easy to confirm. But vouchers in the village, we are told by the Cook County Housing Authority, is We've never had a huge number of vouchers.
It's just, they're all by my house. It's terrible by me, and I'm not lying either.
Well, let us, let us take a look at it and see what's going on in your, in your neighborhood.
4,700 on Davis. A new family moved in. That's where all the problems started.
Okay. Let, let us check on it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening. Brian Ovak, 8127 Costner Avenue. I was just curious what the status of the village lawsuit against the town of Evanston is regarding the water supply contract.
We're still waiting for the federal judge to make a decision on whether to go forward.
Okay. And is, has the, the village contemplated the potential liability if we, in fact, lose that lawsuit? Because as I understand it, we're only currently paying 40% of what's being billed to us. So I know that you all voted on it.
Well, it's an escrow.
It is an escrow?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, an escrow account has been established. There are two lawsuits, one in federal court. We're awaiting the judge's decision. I check on it most every day. I check my email to see, is there something from Lord? He'll be the first to know, I expect. Either John, or I, or Julian will be the next to know. But we are also in state court on the subject, and the state court case has been stayed pending the federal judge's review.
Great. I appreciate your attention to it. Thank you.
Sure. It's very important.
Good evening. Denise Stoneback. I just wanted to make a comment about, I was reviewing voucher report three in the agenda packet, and I noticed that the village of Skokie purchased several items, including a screwdriver and a wrench, envelopes, an LED work light, an electronic LED light, office supplies for investigations, a labor maker, and farmer's market ribbon. All these purchases were made on Amazon, and we just heard about the Amazon effect from our village manager. And we're trying to, you know, I know Skokie has a very pro-local business stance, and I would just encourage, moving forward, if the village could make sure, I know it's more convenient to make purchases online, I find it more convenient as well, but I know a lot of Skokie local businesses would certainly appreciate the business. We won't be accruing taxes from the purchases, obviously, you know, because it's the village of Skokie, but I'm, I know Skokie businesses would really appreciate the business, having one more customer and the activity. So that's just my suggestion.
Well, we always shop local as much as we possibly can.
Right.
That's been our policy. But we also, just like everybody else in this room and beyond, we have to be conscious of what it costs.
Right.
We have to keep, we're trying, you saw the figures.
Sure. Those items-
We're trying to keep every cost we can.
Right. Those items, I just can't imagine that you wouldn't be able to find them in a Skokie local business, so that was what I was reflecting upon.
Okay.
But anyway, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? If not, I think it's trustee Bromberg's turn this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
For executive session.